Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's June 5th Select Board meeting. I call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM and invite you to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is anybody here to make public comment? Outside of public hearing? Okay.
Lucky we started late, Stan.
Just under the word.
Stanley, 43 Stone Creek Road. I'm also the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. I just wanted to give you all a brief explanation of our donation this evening. For a number of years, the trustees have been maintaining a checking account for the copier at the library, where we take the money that the copier generates, put it in that fund, and then pay for the lease of the copier and the supplies that are needed to run it. In a discussion with the town manager, the finance director, the library director, and the trustees, we all decided that it would probably be best if the town took over that fund and maintained it. It could be, end up being a revolving fund at the discretion of the finance director, but we just thought that now was a good time to do that. And so we're making that donation of the funds that we've had in that account to date, and that's what that represents.
Thank you, Stan. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to our public hearings. Item A is a petition from the Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, to construct underground conduits on Equestrian Drive and Laconia Circle. I will first take a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are in public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to?
Good evening. My name is Chris Wellington. I'm a program manager for National Grid. And so what we have before you today are, there is actually four petitions, and they all represent the streets on this one development. So they were broken down into four petitions, but it's really, it's Laconia Circle, Olympic Lane, and Equestrian Drive. So when you look at the entire development, we're standing before you asking to be able to replace the existing electric utilities, and we, I have a more detailed plan for anybody who wants to see exactly where it's going and what side of the streets. There's a rougher drawing on the petition plans, but, so what we'll be doing is, there is a direct buried electric primary cable that's been installed from the beginning of the existence of the U R D, or the development. It's at near end of life, so now it's time to change that cable. So what we do now is we do a drilling, and we drill 30 inches underground from pit to pit, which we create a pit in front of a transformer. All of this is in the public right-of-way, and/or if there's an access pit that we need for a pull box, and we install that as they're shown on the plan. And then we cut over from the old cable to the new cable. When we disturb the area in front of someone's house, if it's lawn, we'll replace the area, we'll hydro-seed it. If we do any damage to a driveway, we'll make the repairs to the driveway. From when I looked at these plans, I don't see any utilities that exist in the driveway other than going across the driveway. When we do directional drilling, we do create an access hole with a big vector truck that just sucks a hole about 12 inches across down to actually see the crossing where we're going to go across the utility. That way, we know we're not going to damage any utilities. If that should happen to be in a driveway, we'll repair the front piece of the driveway, which is about six to eight feet, to create a, like an apron. But when I viewed the plans, I didn't see any of that on driveways, but if it does come up because of a missed utility, that's something we'll address. Any questions for me?
So you feel that there won't be any disturbance of many driveways?
I don't believe so, but you know, sometimes it does happen, and if it does, we will repair the end of, replace the end of the driveway. We won't leave a patch or a pothole in the middle of the driveway. We'll replace the whole end of the driveway, which is usually about eight feet.
And do you level it so the water will pull away from the house, even though they're pretty good-sized lots, that they're not going to puddle at the end of the driveway?
Well, whatever was there will match the slope that was there on the driveway.
You said near the end of its useful life. What year, what year were these homes built? It doesn't seem like that long ago, but I'm sure it is.
I don't remember.
1981.
There we go. There you go.
So it's been 40, 40 years, 43 years. So, and there's been, and the reason we're here is because there've been a few cable faults within the development, so we know that it's time to replace the cables, so that's why we're here to do that.
And what do you think the timeframe for the end-to-end up project will be?
So, speaking with the contractor that's going to be doing the work, he expects to be in July, and it should take about a month to complete the work.
So it's going to start sometime in July?
Yeah.
Do we have a more definitive date when it might start?
At this time, I don't, because he has two other projects in front of him, and we're expected, he said 30 days is about what he expects, so somewhere around the Fourth of July that.
I was just going to say, except for, I'm sure, the Fourth of July.
Yeah, we won't be working the Fourth of July, no.
What will sort of the impact be on the neighbors, the streets, and like, will they be able to maneuver easily through the neighborhood?
They'll be able to get by any vehicles that are in the way. If there's an issue that comes up, you can either reach out to me, I have my business card that I can give out to anybody. They can either reach me by phone or email, or you can speak directly to the contractors that are out there. They've done multiple projects in North Andover in the past, very successful. If there's an issue, we come back. I mean, six months from now, if you're not happy with what you have, we can come back and make repairs. You know, I'm going to be here for a while, so it's my program. I've been here for years and stood before you, so we're here to work with the customers and with the town.
And do you give all of the residents notice of?
Yes, yeah.
Do you expect service disruptions during?
No, we do not expect any service disruption during construction. For the cutover, there could be a service disruption, but we'll give out a notification ahead of time with at least seven days' notification, and we'll work with the.
How long would that service disruption last for that cutover?
Usually about four hours is what it takes. But if it's more, that would be in it, but I don't expect that.
The summer, it's hot.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, it's one of the biggest.
If we can, we'll put it off until the weather breaks a little bit, so we're not calling, causing disturbance in the middle of a heat wave or something like that.
We're finally getting a really nice warm pool day, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Not this week.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
When you're direct drilling, you're going underground, obviously, does that disrupt the paving of the road at all, and do you ever experience any settlement?
So, so we will be going along the side of the roadway in the grassed area, and that's where we're crossing under the driveways. I have not seen where it does damage to a road, because it's 30 inches down below, and so when we're drilling, we're drilling a four-inch hole, and then we're pulling a conduit back in that hole.
I see a note here for the conservation minister that it's going to require some wetland impact. I don't know if that's on this specific leg or if it's the overall project. Has this gone before Concom yet?
Yes, so we did a notification, it's being done under maintenance, and then we have our contractor and somebody within the company who's an engineer, and they look at it, and so there's, there is mitigation that's done, so we just put that out before we start, and we can have the town involved with, they can look at what we're going to install to make sure.
You've begun that review process with?
Yeah, they have, yeah.
Any other questions from the board or anyone who's here tonight?
I have a question.
Can you please come up and give us your name? Is it, is it related to this particular?
Yes, it is.
Because there's four tonight.
Yes, it's pertaining to this, yes. My name is Dave Fipagni. I live at 81 Laconia Circle. I was just wondering pertaining to any kind of underground digging or anything. So there is a large brook that crosses basically our whole neighborhood, so when you say you can do that without any disruption, I just had Verizon at my house, not even a year ago, doing their fiber optic lines. I now have a sinkhole in front of my house, and my front porch dropped three-quarters of an inch, and I have a bottle jack now holding it up.
Can you speak into that?
Oh, sorry.
You need to direct a question to the chair.
Oh, sorry. So my question is, what can they do and how long are they liable for this kind of issue? Pertaining to, when you drill underground, we have a very large brook that runs across our shared properties, pretty much through the whole neighborhood. So there is obviously a higher water table, even 30 inches would be lower than that. So my question is, how long are they going to be liable? How long are they willing to be able to replace anything? If I have another sinkhole created by that, what can be done to prevent this?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wellington?
So I'd have to look directly at what lot the gentleman is speaking about, and you know, we're going to be going up, I believe it, is it a private property feed that comes up to, I'm sorry, to address them directly, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll follow on to the property. Any damage that's done, we repair, we have done it in the past. I don't see us coming that close to the house, because we feed out of handholds or transformers, and then the services are all owned by the customer, so I don't see how we would be coming up to, close enough to the house to damage a house. The hole that we drill is four inches. You know, I guess I'm at a loss to determine how that would happen. I mean, we do cross, but we usually cross where there's a culvert or something that's already existing, and we go over the top of the culvert, but we can look at it if there's some concerns and if there's damages. If an individual is worried about repairs, I can create a letter and give you a letter with my name on it, you know, an easement or whatever is necessary to make sure that you're happy with the repairs that you want, should something occur to the property.
I guess the question is, like, three months down the road, where you did that directional drilling, all of a sudden part of his driveway caves in a little bit, the end of that driveway, is, is the contractor still responsible for that work?
Yes.
What's the period of time?
So the contractors are insured and bonded, and they continue to do work for us, and we hold them accountable, and we have them come back and make the repairs.
For what period of time in general? I mean, because these things can take a little while to manifest.
If a year goes by and there's an issue, either the contractor will repair it, or if I have to, I'll hire another contractor who does our general work to make the repairs. So National Grid will stand before this customer and make repairs to any work that causes damage from our equipment being installed, we will fix.
And don't forget, we also, under our transfer requirements and utility petitions, hold a bond as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you said this before, all the work is being done within the right-of-way, correct?
Within the right-of-way. There are a few locations where the lot is so far off property, there is actually private cable that feeds those properties. So what we're doing is we're working with customers to replace that cable, and we're going to take ownership, we want to replace that cable. So in the middle of the night, if that cable goes out, they're not looking to try to find a high-voltage electrician to be able to do the work for them, so we just feel that it's better if we do that, and that's why we want to get an easement signed, so we can do that and take on that responsibility.
So those are the only properties that you'll actually be extending to the house?
That's right. I think there's two locations that have that, and one of them, we've already replaced the feed to that home off of Laconia Circle, so there's another home, and it must be this gentleman's here.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I have a copy of the plan?
Yep, I'm sure, you sure can. So it's basically divided into two. They split the development in half because of the size of it. So we're doing the petition for the whole development.
No, look at this.
So there's actually two, there's two plans?
Yeah. And I highlighted on the front of it, so you could tell what we're talking about. So although the petition hearing is for the entire development, there's really the front half, which is Olympic, and then a little bit of Laconia Circle. That's what we're intending on doing in July. The second half of it, which runs up Equestrian and the far end of Laconia, which is on this print here, I'm going to try and get it done this year, but if I don't have the budget for it, it'll be done next year, but I'm going to try and get it in, so by the time we get done with the first half, we can follow right into the second half. But right now, we're committed to just do Olympic and the small section of Laconia that comes into Olympic.
How many feet in total?
I'm sorry?
How many feet in total?
It's about 6,000 feet.
6,000. Any other questions? Thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Just come on up.
Come on up.
Tell us your name and your address.
I'm Patty Hart, 71 Laconia Circle. It may have to do with my age, but I, this was the map, and I was just wondering if you folks have a bigger map, so we can actually see a layer of the lines and where these pull boxes are going to be. I've been assured no poles, but if you could just kind of give us a little bit more detail?
I can, so where on Laconia are you?
I'm 71, but.
You're going to ask the question?
I do.
Can you? Great.
But I care about my neighbors as well, so I would say I'd like to see the entire room, not just 71, okay?
Just saying there real quick.
For a bigger map.
My name's Adam Dionne. I'm the contractor designer that designed this, and I was working with Chris and trying to reach out with some of the customers, so I have a, I was just going to come up and show, point out where the actual parcel is that they were questioning.
And maybe for everyone, because I know that was a group question we all had, where these pull boxes going on the map, and where the lines are going to be, the lines are going to.
The question was for 71, so it's right here.
Okay. Kim, do you want to come up and see this, because I'm still blind.
So, yeah.
We can all see. Do we have an electronic version of this at all, sir?
I do not have a digital copy.
I don't have a digital copy. I can send it at another time, but I can't, I just brought it down. I have nothing.
Do you want to see it?
I have, but it's a bit too.
So here is 71, and then, so there's going to be a pull box over here, it's going to go across the road underneath, and it's going to go down here.
That's Equestrian.
He might have enough copies for everybody.
Yep, but this is, this is going down, someone, this is a driveway for 81, I think, or 85.
Well, we share that driveway, so it's for all of us, so we're going down our driveway.
It's going to be downcrossing it, then it's going to be on the edge of the driveway.
That is on our driveway.
It's going to be under your driveway, and then it's going to go over to the edge of the road, the edge of the driveway.
But you know how long our driveway is, so are they going to repair the entire driveway?
They're not going to, what they're going to do is they're drilling underneath your driveway, so it's not, it's, you're not going to have a trench.
Do you want to see this?
There's not going to be, there's not going to be a trench, they're going directly underneath.
Right.
They're going directly underneath the driveway and stuff.
But in order to run that, you need to bore a hole.
On this side. Yes, it's over, it's over here.
Excuse me for a second. We're going to take a recess from our public hearing to let you guys see the pictures that you need to see, and then we'll resume. We can resume, so if you want to just, I can take you to conference room, so you can, if that makes sense.
I had, I had one additional question. I'm Tim Roach, I'm 71, Laconia Circle. What hours are they going to be working?
I, I don't know that. I'm not, I'm just a designer. That would come from scheduling or the construction.
Or Chris.
Can you head back to the microphone?
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. So we work usually seven to four, seven to five.
Seven to four.
Seven to four, seven to five. The guy, usually a 10-hour day is what the guys like to do. That way, they can do four tens, and then if they need to pick up slack in the schedule, they'll work a Friday and do five tens.
They won't do early than seven, seven is the earliest?
No, yes.
And weekends?
Not typically on a weekend. Again, if the schedule gets behind, they may work a Saturday, but at Saturday, I usually make them work from eight to like four, so it's not so, so long.
Okay.
So we're going to recess.
Take a recess.
Deputy Town Manager Casey will take you to a conference room. You can kind of chat amongst yourselves, and then we'll bring you back once we seem to have some consensus.
Okay.
So could we vote to continue the public hearing or recess the public hearing? Either one is fine.
So I'll take a motion to recess the public hearing.
I move to recess public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Great, and we can move on to new business, item E, if that pleases you, Madam Chair.
That would be perfect.
Great, thank you. That's the fourth time I can't leave ever. I've been doing this a lot.
I'm glad they're all paying attention, right? All right, we are moving on to item E of new business, request of the North Andover Athletic Association to use Osgood Street, Stevens Street, Grape Pond Road, Pleasant Street, and Harkaway Road for the night on the Round 5K Road Race on October 7th, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, with a rain date of October 8th, 2023. Al, do you want to come up and tell us about the event?
Sure. Alaperty, 43 Upland Street. Really not much more to it, it's a road race we do every year. This is the 12th year we'll be holding it, but it's our 11th annual, because of COVID, we took a year off. We do it, like I said, for the last dozen years or so. It's a fundraiser for North Andover High School Athletics, and what you said was right. It's from about, I think the kids' race starts, which is on the high school property, that's at 8:30, and then the adult race goes off at nine, or nine and 9:30, I think actually is more accurate, so really 9:30 to about 10:45, 11 o'clock is all will be on the road.
It's a very fun community event, so.
I think so.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Application is in order.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always a great event.
It is. We usually have very good prizes, too. Item F, a request from North Andover Booster Club to use Andover, Johnson, Abbott, Marlborough, Salem, Milk, and Chestnut Streets for the Fourth of July Road Race from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM on the Fourth, I imagine?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Sean Daly representing the Booster Club.
Hi, Sean.
Hoping to run the July Fourth Road Race again. It's been a success in the past, and all proceeds, you know, end up coming back to town in some way or other, and facility, facility upgrades, scholarships, or whatnot, so it's a great event.
Another great event, definitely. Any questions from the board?
No, just thank you for all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad that this race has managed to stick around. Every few years, there's some question about that, so.
Yeah, it's been fantastic.
But you've done a great job, yeah, keeping it going, so thank you for that. So on that note, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move approval.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Item G, a request from Sam Byrd to hold a Fill the Boot fundraiser for muscular dystrophy at the Roundabout on Andover Street from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on June 16th, 2023. Is Sam here or anybody here?
It's an annual event, I think.
Yes, we told Sam Byrd to come at 7:30, because we thought we'd still be in public hearings. But that application is in order as well. I think we may see that with a few of these as we move forward.
Okay.
We can congratulate him if he comes. Right?
Yes.
They don't stand, they stand like on the road. They stand on the road.
On the road.
And put their money in their boot. It's a crazy intersection. They'll wear their bright yellow.
All right. If nobody has any questions, then I would be happy to take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board approved the request from Sam Byrd to hold a Fill the Boot fundraiser for muscular dystrophy at the Roundabout on Andover Street from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on June 16th, 2023.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're moving on to item H, the request of Jessica Pimentel for a proclamation declaring August as Breastfeeding Awareness Month for the town of North Andover. Jessica is here to speak to us.
All right, so yes, my name is Jessica Pimentel, and so I'm looking to have.
Where do you, where do you live, Jessica?
I live right on the street here in town. Literally, I'm going to walk home afterwards.
On Main Street?
Yes, right on Main Street, yep, so Main Street, North Andover, and I am just looking to have August declared for the town of North Andover as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. We do this proclamation through the state. For the past 17 years, we've done it through the state of Massachusetts with Governor Baker. We have submitted it through Governor Healy. We have no doubt that it's going to be approved as well. We've done it in a few other counties and cities in Massachusetts, and because this is where I live, I'm just looking to bring it to my local community and surrounding communities as well.
Okay, sounds great. And I'm sure that you make all the points, that it's really important for especially young moms to know that if they can do it, it really is so good for the baby, so good for the mom, so good for the budget.
And the community.
And the community. It's a wonderful thing to be bringing more attention to one of the nice things about being a mother, so.
Any other questions or comments? And if not, I will take a motion.
I would move approval. Thank you for being it forward.
I'll second.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you.
Do we want to leave the?
I actually, yeah, I have. I can actually present it to you right now.
Let's take on the key to this. Whereas the town of North Andover is proud to recognize the month of August as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in North Andover, and whereas breastfeeding provides a safe, reliable, and renewable food source, especially critical during natural disaster and emergency situations, and whereas all major medical authorities, including the USDA, AAP, CVC, and WHO, recommend exclusive human milk feeding for the first six months of life, and continued human milk feeding until two years or beyond, as mutually desired by parent and child, and whereas there are substantial racial and ethnic disparities in access to lactation support, resulting in the reduced breastfeeding rate and an associated increase in risk for a variety of negative health outcomes, and whereas National Breastfeeding Month and World Breastfeeding Week provide important opportunities to address barriers to human milk feeding faced by families across the United States and around the world, and therefore be it proclaimed that the town of North Andover hereby recognizes, honors, and designates the month of August as Breastfeeding Awareness Month, and will continue to support the goals of National Breastfeeding Month for years to come. No? Thanks for coming in.
I will not read it in Spanish, but it has the same exact English Spanish.
No, you're not reading it.
You would have been great.
He wants to read.
You guys have been practicing? You've been practicing?
You're not there yet. You'll get it any of your form. Cynthia would be so proud of us, though. She would.
It's your final project? Moving on to item I, a request from the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley to use Willow Street and Flagship Drive on October 21st, 2023, from 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM for the Seventh Annual Walk for Hope. Is anybody here to speak to the events? Oh. We need to pause, huh?
Maybe we'll try to read in Spanish.
This is something that they've done annually, though this is nothing newer or different.
It's a weekend drive?
Yeah.
It's a wonderful event.
It is a wonderful event, so...
And they've been doing it a long time.
They have.
You know what, the way everything's going with mental health these days, it is so needed and so important.
I agree. If there are no questions...
Here he is, here he is.
Oh, right on time.
We were just talking about you, sir.
We were.
Just stand right there.
Yep. Very good timing.
She told me 7:45, right?
We were all kind of...
But I appreciate it.
So we're already in process, we'd love for you to tell us who you are in a quick...
Sure. First of all, my name is Bob Artieri, I am a representative of the Samaritans and here to request approval once again this year of our 7th Annual Walk for Hope, and I guess I want to begin by, first of all, by thanking you folks, some of you are new members, I know that, you've approved us for the last six years. Five of those years were actually actual walks, one year was a, because of the COVID, it was done through, obviously online and so forth. It's obviously a very important event for us, because it does a couple of things, and not only raises much-needed funds for the Samaritans, but, and I've been affiliated with the Samaritans for probably over 20, 30 years, Samaritans, which in this area have been around for about 40, 45 years in the Merrimack Valley, believe it or not, helped thousands and thousands of people, and recently with Congressman Bolton behind getting the 988 Suicide Prevention Hotline, unfortunately, we're more busy than ever, but providing extremely important services in terms of people who are suffering with mental health issues, suicide issues, but more than that, we're raising awareness of the issue, a very, very difficult issue. The event itself, which starts at Willow's Professional Park, which is where my office is, we try to make it, given the topic, as upbeat as possible, and we've been getting progressively, and I find it is a positive thing, more and more people coming to this event, I think last year we had about 300, 350 people, and one of the things that I find very interesting, I guess I'll use the word "enpromising," is a large number of high school students that are coming, coming and coming to get involved, to raise funds, and also to raise awareness of very important issues, and we also use the event as an educational event, throughout the walk, if you've ever participated in the walk, which starts at Willow's Street and goes around the industrial park and comes right back to the Willow's Professional Park, it's about 1.4 miles, it's a walk, not a run, and we have all kinds of great people coming, we have little doggies that come along as well for the walk, and we have very informational signs along the way about mental health, awareness, suicide, things of that nature, because we're trying to educate as well as raising awareness and raising money, and I have to thank you folks for, North Andover has been tremendous to the Samaritans, and I'll tell you why, just about two blocks from here is where we have our call center, and Attorney Barawi's office on the second floor, we basically take calls, thousands and thousands of calls a week from people who just sometimes just need to talk to people. We also have Safe Place, which is a place for people who have lost a loved one to suicide, and that's at St. Michael's Church, right down here, so North Andover plays a really integral part in helping people out, really suffering, and unfortunately, in this day and age, a lot of people are suffering. So, we're here once again, and I'm here once again on behalf of the Samaritans and also Family Services of Merrimack Valley, which is our, sort of our parent family, to request again approval, the walk itself is on a Saturday, again, October 21st, it's exactly going to be the same as last year's walk, we expect again about 300, 350 people, depending on weather and so forth, we've been very lucky, we've never had a bad day of weather, and we've actually had, and this is October, we've actually, last year we had, I think it was like about 75 degrees, it was unbelievable, but hopefully our luck doesn't run out, and again, our goal is to raise awareness, to raise funds, to educate people, and to provide opportunities for people to know if they need help, they know that it's there and they can get it, and do it in sort of a fun fashion, we have music, we have, you know, bananas and fruit like that, you know, things of that nature, just to help people water for people who need it, and like I said, the walk site starts at Willow's Professional Park, goes around the industrial park, and comes back to Willow's Professional Park. Because it's a Saturday, there's less traffic, although occasionally there are trucks that go by there, but they know us by now, and the good thing is, is the Willow's Condominium Association, which my office is a part of, provides us the parking in both complexes, so there's parking for 600 cars if we needed it, and last year we were up to, like I said, three, you know, maybe 200 or 300 cars, so we don't, we're not on, we're not on the road, and matter of fact, a great officer, and I'm sorry if I forget his name, came from the North Andover Police and stayed with us for the entire walk, and which was, I thought, just tremendous, just to make sure everything was okay, everybody was fine and everything of that nature, making sure nobody was having any problems, so I forget the officer's name and I apologize, but if he's out there, I appreciate all the help that he's provided. So I'm here again requesting that you folks once again provide us the approval, October 21st, it begins at 8:30, when we register, 8:30 to 9:30, the walk itself is about an hour, depending upon, some people who have, like me, bad knees, takes a little while to get by, then we have a program, a brief program from 11:30 to 12:00, and by 12:00 we're out of there, we clean up the place, and that's about it.
That's great, thank you so much for bringing it here. Any questions or comments from the board?
I would be happy to move approval, it's a fantastic organization, and I believe I've said this to you at other meetings, thank you for doing God's work for these people.
Thank you, thank you. And I don't want to embarrass him, but one of my former students, I used to be a teacher at North Andover High School, and it makes me feel good to see that he's doing very, very well, Mr. Valencore.
He's a grandpa, he's a grandpa a couple times over.
Yes, makes, trust me, makes me feel real old.
I thought you would enjoy that.
But keep in mind, when I was teaching, when I started, I was only like 23, 24 years old, so I don't feel that bad, but he was one of my better students.
Every time I hear Imagine, I think of that class.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Thank you, it's quite an event. I've been over there, my office is over there, too, so I've seen the crowds, and it's quite impressive.
Any questions, anything at all?
We have a motion.
A second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you so much, my timing was impeccable. Have a good night.
Thank you, too.
It's like you planned that. Okay, we're going to move on to item J, the request of EverSource for permission to excavate for the purpose of replacing its gas main from 137 to 185 Sutton Hill Road, is, okay. Tanner is here to talk to this. Thank you, just let us know what your plan is.
My name's Tanner Haslop, I'm representing EverSource Gas tonight.
You said Sutton Hill was the first one?
Yes. Yep.
So, we're planning on replacing approximately 500 feet of bare steel for PSIG gas main from about house number 137 to about house number 185. The reasoning for this project is our operations, our street crews have responded to many leaks in that area on the bare steel main. A little bit of background, bare steel mains corrode very easily, they were installed in the 50s and the 60s, so these pipelines are at least like 60 years old, they experience moisture in the ground and they corrode, and some are in better condition than others, this section is in pretty poor condition, and we would like to replace it to better our system, better the customers in that area, and make it more safe for everybody.
What do you replace it with?
We are replacing it with high-density plastic.
And is it a change from a low-pressure to a high-pressure system, or...
Nope, it's still going to be four pounds.
Which is low?
Intermediate pressure.
Only low or high. You've got... The whole crew of us who know more about this.
As you know, we've had, which is pretty sensitive to gas line work, so can you tell us the safeguards and everything that will be in place to ensure that we don't have any incidents, what can we look forward to and make sure that we are safeguarding the neighbors in, not only in that neighborhood, but in all surrounding neighborhoods as well, as we know, it can be very devastating.
Yeah, yeah, no, safety is our first priority on every job, we have our contracting crew that'll be out there, and then we have a EverSource inspector that'll be watching the crew and making sure that they're following our safety standards and working in a safe manner. You know, we don't rush anything, we take our time, we follow our standards, we have many checks throughout our process, so whenever we're working through, whenever we're working with live gas, we work through a procedure written by our engineering department that's stamped by a professional engineer to make sure that nothing is missed and that all the correct actions are taken when we tie in the new main and abandon the old, so we take safety very seriously.
Appreciate that, and how long do you think the jobs take overall, end to end?
This job, we approximate about a month.
So you'll do it in sections, so service, how will the service, will the service be interrupted at all to the customers?
Yep, so the, kind of the phasing of the job is we lay down the new main, so the new plastic main, we run next to the old, so no service is affected there, and then we tie in the new main, we activate it, so now the old and the new are both active, and then we tie over, we, so if a customer has a newer plastic service, we will just tie that over to the new gas main, some customers have older steel services, and we try to replace those because they corrode and tend to have leaks, so if it's a tie-over, it's maybe an hour at a service, and we'll work with the customer if there's a time that they would like, and for a replacement, it could be the four hours to eight hours for the workday.
So if you have to replace a service to a home, you will then make sure that that property is restored to its prior state?
Yeah, yeah, however it was before, yeah.
Do the people who live in the homes that you'll be working on, do they have to leave the area during the work?
No, no.
But you let them know exactly when the work's being done?
Yeah, we send out letters to all of the customers, and there should be no surprises, so...
Okay. As long as they're none like the ones that we had before. It was a total surprise, especially to the guy in the Midwest who was working the machinery.
So is there remote monitoring of the pressure in the lines?
Yes, so when we go to do the tie-in procedure and the abandonment procedure, we put up gauges right on the pipe, right outside of our work zones, so they measure the upstream pressure of the system, so if there's any fluctuation, which there shouldn't be, but if there is, the gauges, we have people in the crew monitoring the gauges during the procedure that will catch any under or over-pressurization and will stop work immediately and assess the situation.
So will there be someone supervising the site, like right there on the site, looking in the hole and working, looking at the gauges?
Yes, during the procedure, there will be a company inspector there the entire time.
The entire time, because that was a problem last time, too, I believe.
So you're replacing roughly a 500-foot section you said on Sutton Hill Road, is the rest of Sutton Hill Road in the same, currently steel pipe that you know of, or...
I believe it is the steel, like steel pipe, but not nearly in the condition that this certain section is in.
Okay. And you said you, you know, you're aware of the presence of leaks, how are those leaks identified?
Yes.
Customers calling in, is it ongoing monitoring from you guys?
Yeah, so typically how we find out about a leak is either a customer calls in that they smell gas, or we have leak survey trucks that can find leaks in the... Yeah, sniffers. But yeah, once we find a leak, if we monitor it, so we have like a scale of grade one, two, and three, and we'll grade it and take the appropriate action for that.
If there's a problem as you're transferring over, how quickly can you shut down the gas lines?
If there's a...
Like if there's a problem, like over, on the gauges with over-pressurization or...
Oh, oh, yeah, so how long it would...
Like, how quickly can you guys shut this down so that there's no problems?
Who's got their finger on the switch?
Yeah, where's the switch?
The off switch?
Yeah, yeah.
It, it depends, so if it's the very beginning of the procedure, we could shut it down immediately. Say they're...
I know, it's hard.
It, I would, I would hope that within... I don't, I don't want to give you a number that's not accurate, but...
But you guys have a procedure in place?
Yes.
How to react?
We have, we make isolation procedures for these situations.
And I think that that was one of the problems, is that there was not a plan in place where they could react appropriately.
Old pipes were the problem, too, so it is a good thing that we're, but it's just nerve-wracking to have the work done.
Unless I missed it in the application, when is this work scheduled to be performed?
We're hoping to perform this work this month if we're allowed to.
What is typically the lifespan of these gas lines?
So for plastic gas mains, the lifespan is, I would say at least 80 to 100 years, if not more. Plastic gas mains haven't been around very long, maybe 30, 30 years at most, and...
But they don't deteriorate like the steel does?
No, no, like, yeah, that's why we recycle plastic, because it'll last forever in the ground, so...
Sorry, yes, again, we were, we've all been traumatized, so I just, I appreciate you...
No, I completely understand.
Answering our questions.
Although we're glad to have the work done, we just like to know that it will be extremely safely done.
Yes, yeah, so just for the record, that no regulator stations are near this project, which is what caused the previous, so they're like, I think the closest one is like half a mile to a mile away, so...
How is the plastic affixed to the steel pipes? Because it's not welded, right?
Correct, yeah, so we will tap the steel main with a weld fitting and then transition the plastic. So there's a, there's a piece that has, it's like half-plastic, half-steel, and you weld it to the steel and then fuse to the plastic and then just go from there.
And of course the gas is shut off while you're doing the welding, right?
Yes, yeah, we do it in a way that...
Boy, that's scary.
Yeah.
Glad you guys do it and know what you're doing, that's for sure.
Yeah, no barbecue's the day of the work, I would hope, too.
Do the customers need to be relit, like they're pilots and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, so when the customer's tied over, has their service replaced, we have to purge out their service and then tie over and gas it up, and when they get gassed up, they'll be relit.
So you are going into everybody's home?
Yeah, I've been making sure that their service is successfully transferred over.
And you plan that with them, obviously?
Yeah, yeah, nobody's out of the, what's going on?
Yeah, and your notifications then provide a contact person that they can reach out to if they smell gas or something wrong the day of the work, they'll have someone to go to?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other questions about item J? Okay, if not, I will take a motion.
I'll move, I'll move the select board approves the request of EverSource for permission to excavate for the purpose of replacing the gas main from 137 to 185 Sutton Hill Road, subject to all conditions outlined in the street opening permit issued by the Department of Public Works and noted on the application.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we're going to move on to item K, which is a request of EverSource for permission to excavate for the purpose of replacing its gas mains on Hewitt Ave, Minnet Ave, and Rosedale Ave, so this is a similar situation, I'm guessing. It's a similar situation in a different area?
Yeah, yeah, this is just right down the street, actually, this area compared to Sutton Hill.
What is the plan for timing, this is relatively close to a school?
Yes, Franklin Elementary School, so working with other towns, we've started work later in the morning after school's in session, so once all the kids have arrived...
Will it be within the next two weeks, do you think, because it's out in two weeks, so...
Can we do it half the school without a session?
I, I believe it has an August start.
Okay, that's, yep.
Well, that'll work.
That's, and it won't take, how long will that take? I know, how long will that take?
I, I think it's a month and a half to two months.
So it will not be completed before the beginning of school?
Can we sign it in July?
Can we flip them so this one gets done first?
This is a much larger project than the other one, and we have certain scheduling conflicts that we have to work with, and we can, we, I don't think we can move it up any more than where it currently sits due to other in-progress jobs in other towns. due to other in-progress jobs in other towns.
So I guess the concern then is traffic and whatnot when school is back in session? So you had said that you guys will work to start work late, which would be like 8:45?
Yeah, whenever, I don't know the, the times at school, but...
Yeah, but then afternoon?
Then you have to pause at 2:30.
I'm just thinking of traffic on Hewitt Ave specifically, of people leaving Franklin and...
Yeah, we could try to do Hewitt Ave first when, when, in early August when school's not in session and then do the other streets afterwards.
We just, yeah, we'd really like for you guys to be thoughtful and speak with the town about how, the best way to proceed with the project. We've had a few other projects that maybe could have waited till school was done.
Can we condition our approval upon that?
On conversations?
Or, or upon a commitment that Hewitt Ave gets done first, so it's not being done while school's in session?
I worry about that a little bit, if there's a reason that they can't do that, I don't know that I... I think, I would feel comfortable conditioning based on agreement to collaborate and communicate about it.
We can have DPW work with them on the best phasing plan.
That would be...
That's our biggest concern right now.
And the police, I think, on also having adequate traffic control.
Yes, definitely.
How big are the, how much impact do the roadways, like how big are you trenching?
So typically, our trench is two feet wide. But with our trucks and everything, we would take up one lane.
Right, well, I guess I was thinking of remediation when you come back and pave, right? So is it a, is it a trench down the road and these roads are just going to end up like...
With like the rest, with the big strip of...
Is that?
Yeah, typically, we repave the two-foot trench all the way down the street.
Just the trench? Just the trench.
Correct, and any service too.
Which is how we get roads that look the way it is.
You don't know when, I don't think it's under a moratorium, but we certainly will check and see if it is or not. Or when they're due to be...
Yeah, where they are on the list.
Typically, what happens is we meet with the, with Eversource and with the grid and talk about our pavement plan and try to line these projects up as best as we can. So I will check in with DPW, I have a meeting with them on Thursday to see if that has happened and if we have any restoration plan for the street. We probably would like, try to line it up to our next, if they're going to be working in it this construction season, we'd probably try to line it up for next construction season, but...
I think that would go a long way for residents.
Any other questions?
Probably ask National Grid if they've got any work they want to do over there.
Well, that's what we try to do, yeah.
Coordinate.
And also the water department.
Yes. A lot of moving parts. Okay, any other questions about this? If not, I will take a motion.
I'll move the select board approve the request of Eversource for permission to excavate for the purpose of replacing its gas mains on Hewitt Ave, Minnit Ave, and Rosedale Ave, subject to all conditions contained in the street opening permit issued by the Department of Public Works and noted on the application.
And?
With, with, with a commitment from Eversource and the town to work together on mitigating any impact to the Franklin School.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Item L, to confirm the town manager reappointments of Patrick Scanlon and Jennifer Abu-Ezzi to the Board of Health and Christian Caldwell to the Board of Assessors. So I'm going to hand it over to Town Manager Robbie, yes?
Thanks, so I have three committees that are up this year. This is two of them and then the third one, Planning Board. I'll be bringing forward at our June 12th or 13th, depending on what we decide tonight, meeting. So this is a reappointment of Dr. Patrick Scanlon to our Board of Health. It is a reappointment of Jennifer Abu-Ezzi to our Board of Health, she's actually a new member. So she had been appointed within the last year but filled a vacancy, so she's expiring. And then reappointing Christian Caldwell to the Board of Assessors. And if you remember correctly, I asked all of my board members who are expiring this year to reapply. I posted all of my positions and these were reappointments that I chose to make.
Great, thank you for that explanation. Any questions? If not, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move the select board approve the town manager appointments of Patrick Scanlon, Jennifer Abu-Ezzi to the Board of Health and Christian Caldwell to the Board of Assessors for terms ending June 30th, 2026.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are now going to go into licensing.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we open a session of the Northern Licensing Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Hand it over to you, we're in licensing.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, sorry. Trying to move things along.
So we are, we are now in licensing, just give me a moment to put my papers together. So we have three items on the agenda for licensing this evening and we have a request from the trustees of the Stevens Coolidge House for a one-day wine and malt liquor license on June 18th, 5 to 7, for a Father's Day bash. Sounds like fun and hi, thank you for stepping up.
My name's Colleen Hamilton, I'm representing Stevens Coolidge House and Gardens and the trustees. It's good to see you all again this evening. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the event.
Well, if you want to give it a plug, that's a good time, too, you could work it all together.
Yeah, so June 18th, we're doing our Father's Day bash. So we'll have a performance from Cold Chocolate, we have souped-up food truck for food and we'll have True North Ale for our brewing and we'll have lawn games out on our event lawn as well.
Wow.
Yeah.
You've got some fun names going along.
Yes.
And it's from 5 to 7, it ends at 7 o'clock.
5 to 7, correct.
Where's the music venue? In what part of the?
In the far back corner of our event lawn, as all of our concerts are, yep.
It's like that little nothing that you guys created?
Exactly, yep.
And favorable recommendations from Fire, Police, Health Department, and Building Department. Let's do so without any stipulations.
Wonderful.
Are you charging for entry into the event?
We are, yes, yep. It's $12 for member adults and $20 for non-member adults.
And kids are free?
Kids are free.
I mean, it is Father's Day.
Exactly, yep. Children are free, yes.
And what were the food trucks again?
We have souped-up food truck for the Father's Day bash, yep. More than just soup.
And is there a rain plan or no?
Uh, no, we unfortunately, yeah.
Refund?
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
I would move the select board, acting as license commissioner, approve the application from the trustees Stevens Coolidge House for one-day wine and malt liquor license on June 18th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the Father's Day concert.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and no, it is a unanimous vote, so I guess you're going to be staying right there. So on the next one, this is an six-application from the trustees of reservation located 153 Chikering Road, one-day special wine and malt liquor licenses for a summer concert series from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Dates are July 7th, July 14th, July 21st, August 4th, August 11th, and August 25th. Would you like to speak to this?
Of course, yeah, so this is, I believe, our fourth or fifth summer doing our summer concert series. Again, the bands will be performing in that far northwest corner of our event lawn. We have them facing the French Garden and closer to 115 Andover Street. We monitor the sound really closely, we talk to the bands beforehand to make sure that volume is at an acceptable level and we go kind of all around the property to make sure that it sounds okay. But again, for this, we'll have a food truck at each of the events, we'll have notch brewing for our beer vendor for the summer concerts. We'll have an ice cream truck at some of them and we'll have lawn games out for the event as well.
And what are these days, are these weekdays or weekends?
They are Fridays.
Fridays, okay. And do you have a schedule of who we play in each one of them yet or?
Uh, we do, yes, I don't have it on me, but it's kind of a mix of folk, jazz, very like easy-listening type music.
Not rock bands?
No, not rock bands.
And what are you charging for these events, I'm sorry?
Uh, again, $12 for members and $20 for non-members, yeah.
Perhaps in the future, you could just put the day so that you have to say, oh, this one's Friday, this one's Saturday, this one's Thursday.
Yes, yeah, all, yeah, all on Fridays and then I'll do Sunday for the Father's Day, yep.
Right, of course, it's always been Sunday. Any more questions from anybody here?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that is a unanimous vote. So I think you're all set for this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good evening, you too.
You as well. And we have one more item on the agenda and that is for licensing. And this is the night for interesting names, it's called the Cookie Monster.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from this, from this item in particular.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll knock on the window when it's time to come back. Or they'll all be walking out with happy faces. Okay, so the next item is the Cookie Monster. Company located at 111 Turnpike Street for a commerical license, do we have anybody there? You had the look on your face, you were the guy, so please get up and speak.
Wife, come on up.
Yes, both of you come, it's a family, it's a family.
It's a family-owned business, yeah, locally-owned Massachusetts business.
Your name and your address would be helpful, thank you.
Melissa and Scott Lindeman, we reside at 152 Holden Street, Danvers, Mass.
Okay. And you are the, the owners of...
The owners of the Cookie Monster company.
Okay, would you like to tell us a little bit about it? Do you sell cookies?
I'm going to let her do most of this. We do, we sell cookies, we started out with a food truck in 2011 and now we have six or seven food trucks and this will be our sixth store. And we try to do one or two every year and, you know, just keep plugging along with it. We put out a big social media thing and North Andover was the one that wanted it the most, I suppose, so here we are, you know?
And they're anxiously waiting, I can tell you that.
It's a great location, you've got a built-in audience, right? Within walking distance.
I insisted that we bring some cookies to have some samples, if you want to take one and pass it around. Bring it up in the room?
Well, I will say that my son is very excited that you're coming to North Andover. We don't have to drive to Danvers to get the cookie cake for his birthday anymore.
When my daughter was younger, she used to make a summer bucket list and the, many years ago, we drove to Danvers to get, that Cookie Monster was on the bucket list.
I was there today painting and doing some finishing touches that looked really, really good in there. We built a little party room for like birthday parties for kids and all like that, it really...
That's a great idea.
Might be the nicest store now, it came out really nice, so we're excited about it.
He builds, I bake.
There we go.
Did I see correctly that you're planning to open tomorrow, possibly? Is that?
That's, that's the plan.
Oh, it's the plan?
That's what I...
She's the pusher.
That's what I thought.
It used to be Joseph A. Banks.
Oh, Joseph A. Banks, okay.
Oh, so it's a nice big store.
They broke it, well, they broke it in half.
Okay.
And we took the right side, just adjacent to Pier Bar, right next to the workout facility, you know?
Between title boxing and...
Diabolical.
And do you bake all the cookies in-house or do you, so in each one of your stores you bake?
Right.
In each one of your stores you bake, Robert?
Well, this is your chance to kind of, a little time in the sun, so tell us what types of cookies. You've just talked about that you have parties that are available there, so feel free to tell us a little bit about it.
So we have probably 12 to 15 different types of cookies, everybody can come in. We've really picked up on ice cream sandwiches, so you can come in, you pick one cookie, pick your ice cream, pick another cookie. It's a nice family, I think we keep it fairly priced, that it's, we're a big family, four kids, so we try to keep it affordable for families to come in and share and cater to businesses in the area and we'll have birthday parties and corporate events.
Yeah, we'll have Cinnabon cookies and red velvet cookies, lemon, blueberry cookies and chocolate chunk and salted caramel and M&amp;M's, so peanut butter, peanut butter, chocolate chips, so there's quite a variety.
He doesn't like them at all, does he?
Want a day, he has one a day.
No, I know, I'm trying to be good, just for, just for the summer, then I'll be getting back on them.
So do you also say, is something a little different as a favor for a party or a wedding, do you do things like that as well?
They cater high school graduations, I know Jared's at home watching and in 2019, you came to our house in Danvers.
Do a little bit, a little bit.
Yeah, do wedding favors, uh...
Whatever, yeah.
Parties, corporate orders, we really do wholesale with some, to Crosby's grocery stores, we're really dabbling a little bit of everything.
And you said you started in 2011? That's fabulous, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're so happy to have you in North Andover.
Thank you.
No one could be grumpy, even the Cookie Monster eating a cookie.
And we'll probably be there tomorrow.
You might have a line.
Get your website with the location, too.
Yep.
So it appears as though everything is in order with Fire, Police, Border Health, and Building Department. Correct, am I missing anything?
Correct, everything is in order.
Everything is in order, so...
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
Yeah, and somebody even reached out to us last week and said, hey, we see you're open, don't forget that there's a couple of things we had forgotten. I don't remember Dawn or somebody, but somebody was on it. We appreciate her doing that, that was really helpful, because there's a couple little things missing and we were able to get...
Well, time is money and especially if you've made an announcement, so good for, good for our people, yeah. So motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And congratulations and welcome to North Andover.
We're excited to be here.
Thank you.
Best of luck. How many common, common vic licenses get...
Too many rounds of applause.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
Madam Chair, I'll move we move out of licensing.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Come back.
And Madam Chair, it looks like we may be able to re-enter into our public hearing. Okay, I was afraid to ask.
She ate your cookie while you were going. Wine for the cameraman.
Madam Chair, I'll move we reopen the public hearing for, we moved out of, we moved out of this, sorry.
We did.
So I'll move we reopen the public hearing for Massachusetts Electric, DVA National Grid to construct underground conduits on Equestrian and Laconia Circle.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so we are, our public hearing is reopened and...
So after much discussion? There are a couple of different issues here, so we're here standing before you as National Grid looking for a petition for, to be able to put in conduits in the public right-of-way. There's a few pieces of property that are fed in its private cable across private property. So those would require an easement and that is completely independent from the projects that's going forward. If, if a landowner chooses not to sign an easement, the cable that existing on the, in the, on the property will stay the old cable. And if it should happen to have a problem, that's, that's an issue that they would have to, to deal with. So, and, and we'll work with that in, in the future to try to alleviate that and get an easement signed and if not, then that's what, that's what it is. But for the rest of the neighborhood, we can move forward with the plan that's shown in the public right-of-way and at least replace the rest of the cable as shown. So, and I've given my card to the people who are concerned and they have a contact and we'll work with them and to move forward with this.
So nothing will be replaced without their, obviously?
Yeah, we can't do anything on private property unless we have the right to do so and that's what we'll work for it on those pieces of property. But in the public right-of-way, that's what we're here for tonight, is to address that.
I have to ask you, though, that if someone opted out not to do it, there must be a conversation with safety.
Well, it's not that it's not safe, it's just that the cable fails, it takes out the electricity and then it de-energizes it and then we come out to, if we own it, we find it, we fix it, we repair it. In this case, they're going to, we're going to isolate it because we're going to make it so we can isolate the privately-owned cable and then they're going to have to get it fixed and then we will re-energize that piece.
Okay, so will you explain something to me that I didn't?
It's responsibility of the owner of the house versus...
Right, but as long as even an abandoned cable from your, your company, I guess.
So it's not abandoned, it's customer-owned, it's still energized... It's still energized and in service. It's just that we don't own it, we don't maintain it.
So they would have to get their home, high-energy, high-voltage electrician.
Which is the case, which is the case today.
Are those typically at the end of their usable life also? I mean, that's why you're doing this replacement.
Yes, so it's getting towards the, the end of life. That, in, in particular, I don't think I've had faults in the pieces that are on privately-owned property, because they would know, because they would be, have fixed it. Our issues have mostly been on Olympic, and I think on Laconia.
So, again, just getting back to safety. I mean, I'm obviously a novice in this. I never installed gas lines before. Who gets notified? Would it be the fire and the building commissioner?
For what?
That it's now a privately-owned cable?
No.
It's privately...
It's just carried on the, on the maps, that it's privately-owned cable. Like you can have, like you have plumbing in your house, and you own it, and you maintain it, and it's on your property. So the, the gas company out in the street, they don't go on your property to fix your equipment. You own that gas line in the house. They stop at the meter. So if you have a problem inside, it's on you to repair.
Okay. I guess just because of the nature of what we're dealing with is what I'm trying to just to get, that making sure that we keep people safe.
This is electric, not gas.
Oh dear, I'm on the wrong one.
It's okay. Still report.
Been a busy night for utilities.
Same situation that it is today, if I'm understanding correctly. And it's at the homeowner's discretion as to whether or not, it's their choice as to whether or not they want to undergo this work with you.
And we're just looking to approve the work in the...
It's in the public right-of-way.
For those homes that do have the private service, is National Grid offering to replace that service free of charge for those customers?
So we're not doing the service, which is...
No, I'm sorry, the...
The primary?
Yeah, the, the, to the home, from the streets to the home.
So we would, so we would come in and we would install it free of charge, and then we would take on, we would own that.
And be responsible for it.
What we need is, we need an easement that says we are allowed to come on your property to install and to maintain it.
Can I ask why it was done differently?
So...
Forty years ago, what did we say, forty years ago?
The tariff was, tariff was written in 1992, prior to that, under certain circumstances. If you had a lot, and you were on the back of the lot, of whatever reason, we would make you own the cable. That's how it was. I don't know why, but they realized that, that didn't make sense. And so they got away from that, and so now we don't do that anymore.
How many years ago did they get away from that?
1992.
Okay. It's when they stopped it.
Yeah, that's when they stopped doing it.
Because it's underground, right?
Yes.
Most stuff is above, right?
Yeah, that's right, most of it's in there. And so typically, when you do a development like this, all the easements are done while it's owned by one owner. They got the farmer that owned it first. When you're gonna develop it, the developer comes in, and then we get the easement for the entire development. And then, so this doesn't happen, but in the old days, stuff like this happened. So I'm just trying to make it better by, but, by trying to get National Grid to own the utilities where we can. And, but, you know, it's gonna be a agreement between people.
Case by case.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments for this public hearing? Fabulous.
Does a hand up want up?
Oh, sorry, I couldn't, come on up. Come on up and just identify yourself and your address.
Patty Hart, 71 Laconia Circle. We are the family that, one of the families that has the, is questioning whether we want to give them an easement on our property, which means they can come anytime, anytime, and not be compensated for that. So that's, we are the ones that are 71 Laconia that have a, want to look into it a little further before we give up our easement.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, need would be in perpetuity?
Yes.
Yep, and it's, it's pretty long when going down the road, because we have a long driveway, so anyway. Full disclosure. So you're, right now, you're just, you're just looking for, for more time to study it, is what she's saying.
But we are not, we're not part of that. That's not...
Which one are we on? Talking cookies, I won't let go.
I guess we would have both on the agenda, right?
Yes. Okay. So hearing no other comments in this public hearing, I will take a motion to close the public hearings.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. That being said, should we vote, or do you think we should do that? We'll vote on...
I think you should do all public, all public hearings first.
All the public hearings are, since they are basically the same. Okay. So we're gonna move to item B, and I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
Moved over the public hearing petition of National Grid to install underground conduits on Laconia Circle and Olympic Lane.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. We are in a public hearing. All those in favor. Skipping the voting. All those in favor. All right.
That was very nice of you, you let us know. We are now on to another one. If you stood there, we would have been more confused.
So there's, there's four public hearings, and with the discussion, we had previously covered this same area. So if you have any questions about this, it basically was covered on the first discussion.
Similar work, slightly different location.
Yes.
Any other questions?
So like I, when I gave out the maps, there's four petitions. And then two petitions, which is, there's gonna be a little piece of Laconia and Olympic that's gonna be done in July. And then the other two petition, petitions are gonna be for a later time, if I have the funding for that, for this year.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, any other questions about this particular petition from the board? And if not, if anybody, anybody out there who would like to speak to this?
Is this the Laconian Equestrian one? Is this number three?
Yeah, Laconia, Olympic.
Laconia, Olympic.
We just did Laconia and Equestrian. Well, I guess it's still me, it's still Laconia. So, all right, just real, real simple.
My name's Theodore Patrolt, I'm at 115 Laconia Circle. Laconia Circle 115 is at the corner of Equestrian and Laconia. So my question is, and the issue that I, or my concern is, we went through this with Verizon in the last year and a half, same as my neighbor in 81 Laconia, where we had damage to our property. His is yet to be resolved, that's terrible. Mine took me over a year to resolve it. They damaged my irrigation system, which would have been a simple fix. The person they sent to fix it made it worse. So then it became a massive complex situation, almost a, and again, it's not the end of the world, but still nonetheless, took me well over a year to re, to get my money. And respectfully, the only way I got my money back was, I fired off like 60 emails to the highest-up Verizon people I could find in the country, and got one of their secretaries to call me back. Because all the lines of communication I was given, from the Verizon, from the contractors, da-da-da-da, all, I followed that process. It got me nowhere but running around in voicemails and nonsense. So unfortunately, as I spoke to Chris, it's not that I don't believe him, I'm a businessman, I get how this works. I was in corporate America for a long time, and I know that sometimes it takes, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. I don't want to be the squeaky wheel anymore. Like, if something gets broken, I just want someone to fix it. I'm not gonna make a big stink, I'm not, I don't want to run around and go, look at me, you broke my stuff, just fix it. That's all, that's all I ask. But I don't want to have to chase it for a year. So my concern is, with the property, my grass still goes to the edge of the world, even though they say four feet in, and this belongs to all of us, right, I guess? Well, it's still where our spritzers are, and that's where our grass is. My grass and my stuff will never, I've accepted it, it's never gonna be the same. It's all chopped up, it kinda sucks, and it's not gonna change it, but they'll never do anything to fix it. But if I have that same issue again, then what? Then what do we do? Then we're chasing around what? You know what I mean? We're going back and forth, running circles. So I'm all about repairs and improvements, and I love National Grid, I don't have any problem with anything, as long as stuff's not damaged. If someone has to dig a hole in my yard, I'm good with that, I'm happy with it. Just let us know when you come in, we'll move the kids, no problem. But when there's an issue, I just don't want, I just don't want to chase it for a year, respectfully, like I did last time.
This is before they covered under the bond. So we have a bond, and additionally, we do have a little bit more teeth than you do, because they do come before us for other street opening permits. So the board does have discretion to not allow those until work, other work is mitigated. So we have a little bit more teeth, thankfully.
And certainly, we want the same thing that you do.
Yeah, I just want to be happy, I'm happy with everything. Dig as you want, I'll give you a shovel, I just want to make sure they break something.
Come talk to us, if there's a problem, we're here.
You have to let us know.
Let us know.
Yep. Easily accessible.
Or even the town manager is...
Certainly, yeah.
So we'll, we'll put out a contact letter to all of the residents, so they'll have the contact information, my contact information, all the contact information for the contractor. And again, if there's an issue, they can reach out to me. I know we've had experience with other utilities, but I think I've stood before the board multiple times on other developments. I think we have a pretty good track record, and we'll do everything we can to make right on.
Thank you for that. Any other comments for this public hearing? And if not, I will take a motion to close this public hearing. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Moving on to item C, petition from National Grid to construct underground conduits on Olympic Lane and Salem Street. I will take a motion to open the public hearing. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay.
We're ready.
Same discussion, same area, same date, all of that, it all obtains.
But this time, we're on a busier street.
Yes, it will. There's a lot of room out there, but we're only on one side of the street, and we let homeowners know ahead of time. So if we're in front of your house, or we think we're gonna block you in, we'll, we avoid driveways. So we're only going under the street, driveway, it shouldn't be a concern.
Do you have a police detail on Forest, or no?
We do. Our policy is to get a police detail.
I think it is a busy street. And they had to approve all the detours over two weeks' floor.
I did read that.
Yep. Okay. Any comments from the board? Any public comments on, about this particular hearing that we're in right now? Which is, yes, Olympic and Salem.
Where did I reinforce? I'm sorry.
Next, we have to do it again, Laura. All right, hearing, no further comments. I will take a motion to close this public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one more time, we have item D, the petition from National Grid to construct underground conduits on Laconia and, Laconia Circle and Forest Street. I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll move to open the hearing for the petition of National Grid to install underground conduits on Laconia Circle and Forest Street.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So same, same...
We got it.
Are these all gonna be happening within the same timeframe?
Yes.
But two...
So the Equestrian Drive and that piece of Laconia that goes out to Forest, that is phase two.
It may or may not happen this year. That's the, depending on funding.
So there's, there's, there's two, two phases. So you have Olympic and a little piece of Laconia, that's July. Then you have the rest of Laconia Circle, and then Equestrian Drive. That's gonna be, I'm shooting for August.
Either immediately following.
So this is just that last piece of it that runs out to Forest Street.
And this permit is good for one year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. Any other comments about this public hearing from the board? Any further comments from the public about this public hearing? For Laconia and Forest Street? Hearing none?
Madam Chair, I'll move to close public hearing for the petition of National Grid to install underground conduits on Laconia Circle and Forest Street.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public hearings have been closed. We are gonna move on to new business. I think we should probably take them individually. Item A, a vote on the petition for National Grid to install underground electric conduits at Equestrian Drive and Laconia Circle. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item B, the petition from National Grid to construct underground conduits on Laconia and Olympic Lane. I will take a motion.
I'll move approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And one more. Item D. This is a petition from Massachusetts Electric Company and Businesses, National Grid, to install underground electric conduits at Laconia Circle and Forest Street. Recommending they go to...
Why would they force up separate hearings?
Because of the timing, I believe, because they weren't doing them all at once. I said the same thing to Laura, I'm like, it'd be easier if they go at one, but I think due to the timing of the permit.
And everybody had sort of a different issue.
Yes, so...
It worked out, though. Thank you all for helping figure it out. All right, we are gonna move on to our consent items, which are to accept a donation from Edgewood Association to the youth center in the amount of $2,500, to accept a donation in the amount of $50 to the library from the North Andover Women's Club, and to accept a donation in the amount of $10,822.43 to the library from the Library Board of Trustees.
Madam Chair, select board accept all consent items.
I'll second.
I have a motion.
I'm gonna cap you about another $2,500 in a different pocket of the youth syndrome. I'm worried about that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I suggest we send thank you notes to each one of the organizations that have donated the money.
Great, thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going to move on to the approval of minutes, the open session minutes of May 22, 2023. Has everybody had a chance to look?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the minutes from May 22, 2023, as written.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And item B, the amended minutes of April 10, 2023. Ms. Vindelys asked for the minutes to be amended, so did everybody?
I looked at it and I went, no, that's, that didn't happen that way. It's my fault. That's the thank you one.
Okay.
Madam Chair, a motion we approve. The minutes from April tenth, twenty-twenty-three, as amended.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. We're moving on to our town manager's report.
I have nothing on the agenda today.
All right. Thank you. And now slick word comments.
It is just one week later. The Memorial Day service was absolutely fantastic.
It was.
We had, from beginning to end, the weather was great. They just get better and.
It was great.